please join us in a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, that brings us to public comments. Mr. Doyle?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We only have two public commenters this morning. First is Connie Jackson, who will discuss the board.
I didn't want to miss the recognition. It was a tough morning. First, I want to say for board appreciation, recognition week next week, since we won't be here, I hope, how much I appreciate our board. We've been able to do great things the last two years, and it's been a really well-functioning board for the most part. And I really do appreciate the great work that we've been able to do, and all of you, and I wanted to thank you all. Second, I want to thank our superintendent, who makes it all possible, and just, you know, cracks the whip on you guys, or you crack the whip on him, I'm not really sure, but who, as always, has set, you know, the great tone for our district, and our schools, and our happy teachers, and happy everybody. Everybody, right? Yeah? Just say yeah. Just work with me here, people. To that end, I know that our superintendent is working with Brad to get that 5% raise for this year. I know he almost got it last year and just did four, and I know he's working for that five for this year. So I just wanted to remind him, in case, you know, it had slipped his mind. I also want to, you know, support Mr. Morgan in his quest for parental engagement. I know that we didn't agree on the last form of parental engagement, but I know that he's going to keep striving for a form of parental engagement that we can agree on. So keep the fight up, but I'm sure we can somehow come to agreement on that. And, Madam Chair, I wanted to compliment you on how short you've been able to keep meetings, and I really, really like that. I need to testify at the Capitol today in support of Senate Bill 362, 364, losing my mind. So, you know, if we could cut this off today early, I really appreciate that, okay? Thank you all. And again, thank you, Board, and we appreciate all you do.
Our final speaker, Madam Chair, is Geishen, who will discuss parent engagement.
Geishen with Educators First. I have been asked to speak on behalf of Educators First. We want the board to know that we are in support of the Modified and Improved Parent Involvement Project. We believe that the addition of rewards to parents instead of punitive actions removes some of the objections that were voiced when the project came before you earlier. We all know that research shows that one of the most significant ways to increase student achievement is through parent involvement. If we are going to improve parent engagement, especially in our low-achieving schools, then we must find methods of encouraging our parents. The proposal from Mr. Morgan is a beginning. We must begin somewhere. In a recent survey to our members, 89% of our participants supported a mandated parent accountability law. Educators First has, for the last couple of years, been researching projects and laws in Georgia and other states that have already established mandated programs. We commend Mr. Morgan for taking a first step towards addressing the missing piece to improving student engagement, achievement. We hope that you will discuss his proposal and find a way to support this pilot for Pebblebrook High School. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, speakers. We appreciate your comments. Mr. Superintendent? Okay. Board members, you have a copy of the minutes. Does anyone make a proposal to approve those minutes? All right, Mr. Chastain and Mr. Scamhorn seconds. All those in favor of approving the minutes? Right, unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, you want to move forward with Mr. Wilson at this point?
Yes, Madam Chair. If it would be acceptable to the board, we've got a presentation by Mr. James Wilson. If we can move that so that we can get that and get him out of here, that would be preferred. That's okay.
Great. All right, we'll turn it over to Mr. Adams.
Good morning, Mrs. Superintendent, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm pleased to introduce James Wilson from Education Planners. As you're well aware, we've recently conducted not only a demographic study, but a classroom utilization study, all in our attempt to even better plan strategically for an upcoming SPOLOST. And as we explained to the board previously, our goal is to update that demographic study every year, so that it's not a static document, but that we update it and make it even more accurate every year. So towards that end, Mr. Wilson is here today to provide an update on the projection of future student populations for planning purposes. So, Mr. James Wilson.
Thank you. For ease, it'll probably be best if everyone tries to use the monitors, be with you. And one year ago, almost to the day, we presented to you, myself along but if I may approach the board, I'll give everyone a copy as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wilson.
with Dr. Steve Salmon, who is our main demographer, and the one who normally does most of the work here, we presented to you your 10-year demographic study. And it was directed to us by you and the superintendent that each year we should come back to you to give you a yearly update. The importance of that, of course, is trying to project 10 years out can be questionable or debatable as the years go by, but certainly in the first year, we should be pretty close to where we believe we should be, and that proved true in this case. So from a demographic standpoint, there are a few factors we always look at. The Atlanta Regional Commission, the ARC, they will tell you very quickly that growth is tied to basically three things initially. That is water. So Cobb County has the Chattahoochee River and Alatuna Lake. Interstates, we have 575, 75, 285, 20. And then in an area where there is the potential for jobs, which is typically metro areas. So we are a prime target for growth and continuation of growth. The second phase of that, which is what makes communities stay strong, are three other factors. One is the affordability to live in the county. And our county shows opportunities for that regardless of income. The second is safety. And the third one, probably, which is the most important of all, and that is the education children will receive. And that's why you will always see demographic reports or studies that show growth in this county, because this has always been, has always been, and will always be, I believe, the place for families to move, for all of those factors. So I congratulate you and the superintendent and the administration for all the work that you're doing to make sure that people want to move here because they know they'll get a great education. So thank you. So that's the start of this. As we go to the second slide, it looks exactly like the slide that we put in there a year ago, because this is how you do demographics. You look at live births, you look at building permits, you look at enrollment patterns, populations, new homes, targets for growth, and those kind of things. And that's what we do. And we look at live births, and we have 280 pages that we received from the Cobb County government that shows us every building permit, residential building permit, whether it's townhomes, condos, single-family apartments, from January 1 of 215 to December 31 of 2015. So we take a look at every single building permit to help determine where the growth may or may not be, so we can give you the best projections possible. The next page is also a page that you saw in the original document, but this has two items on there that are really strategically important. You can see the blue bars are historical and their exact numbers of live births in those years. What we said to you a year ago is that for school year 1920, which would be births in 2013, I think, you will have 9,200 live births in the county. We were able to validate that data shortly after we did our presentation, and the data actually was 9,222. So we missed it by 22. But it gave us a real good indication that we were on target, that our planning was accurate. Now, a year later, we have now found the information for the next year, 2014, and that is when six-year-olds will be entering your school system in school year 2021. We missed that. That's also the importance of doing a yearly update. It shows that we were projecting, and you can tell it's an estimate because it was 9,200, 9,250, and on down the way, it's an estimate, that it was actually 9,658. Those numbers are exact. Now, every now and then, the Department of Community Health will adjust it a number or two as they clarify their work, but what it shows to us is that, and if you recall, our projections a year ago The next page is also a page that you saw in the original document, but this has two items on there that are really strategically important. You can see the blue bars are historical and their exact numbers of live births in those years. What we said to you a year ago is that for school year 1920, which would be births in 2013, I think, you will have 9,200 live births in the county. We were able to validate that data shortly after we did our presentation, and the data actually was 9,222. So we missed it by 22. But it gave us a real good indication that we were on target, that our planning was accurate. Now, a year later, we have now found the information for the next year, 2014, and that is when six-year-olds will be entering your school system in school year 2021. We missed that. That's also the importance of doing a yearly update. It shows that we were projecting, and you can tell it's an estimate because it was 9,200, 9,250 on down the way, it's an estimate, that it was actually 9,658. Those numbers are exact. Now, every now and then, the Department of Community Health will adjust it a number or two as they clarify their work, but what it shows to us is that, and if you recall, our projections a year ago said that you're going to grow in high schools. There's a bubble, there's always a bubble in demographic work, it seems like, and that's in like the 7th, 8th grade, so there's this bubble of a large number of students going through, and then lesser students coming in behind it. So as we go down these pages, you'll see that we're projecting growth in the high schools, but not necessarily growth next year in the elementary schools. And that's what we talked about a year ago in our 10-year study. This is a determination here, or determiner, that that may change down the road, that if this continues from year to year, starting school year 2021, you're going to have more first graders than we had anticipated. And if that continues, you will see growth continue throughout the elementary schools that quite honestly, our 10-year study doesn't show. It shows a decline, actually a fairly decent decline. So this is an indicator, and it's all part of demography work, that we try to look at every single thing that could tell us and predict accurately. And obviously, when you start trying to predict 10 years out, there are things that will happen in our communities that change this. The Atlanta Braves a couple of years ago certainly changed everyone's thinking as far as growth and projections. A few years ago, in 2008, 2009, with the economic turndown, that changed things as well. All of a sudden, for the first time in the history of this school district, you had no growth. Everything was stable, everything was just kind of an opportunity to stay as close as you can to what you have. So the next slide shows you, and we always do this, and you can see most of it is history, but the last two years on the right-hand column, you'll see that in 2014, those were the single-family building permits. That's what we showed you a year ago. So this year, we're showing you the next year, and you can see that there's been a slight growth, which is good. Not large, but good. But the next slide will show you something that's fairly significant, and that is the multifamily building permits. Look at the decline, which is actually showing more stabilization, less apartments, more single-family homes, additional growth. So you'll see a decline in apartments, and in the next slide, you'll see overall that the county is showing that 2015, we have building permits of 1,996. And we actually do look at every single building permit, trying to plot and make sure of the locations of those. So that's some of the history that we use to try to make sure, and the decline here is basically because of the multifamily permits. Reduction in apartments, reduction in multifamily housing, increase in single-family housing, which I think is a good thing for our community. The next indicator is very important, and I think every one of you have seen this as you have driven our county, because it is all over the county. And that is that this is a great place to educate children, but it is also a great place to continue to live. There's a law on the books that 62 and older reduce their property taxes. I'm in, I'm in. It was a great thing just a few months ago to go over and reduce my property taxes. But part of that has also brought on senior adult living complexes. And as you can see here, the one in the very middle is in Kennesaw, the one to the right is in Kennesaw, one to the very left is West Cobb on Dallas Highway, the one down at the bottom is in Powder Springs. It's basically all over our county. That is a popular building right now, which is, as they call it, 55 active adults, some call it senior living, but it's basically 55 and older. And that's a big part of our county right now in building. So that's something to stay attuned to, to make sure that we're monitoring that, because it can affect your income on taxes, and it also can affect your enrollment if you don't look at that as a separate indicator when you look at building permits. The next slide is a slide that we showed you a year ago. This time, we put an overlay on it, because a year ago, we had to tell you that the economy had put a lot of homes underwater in their mortgages. The value of their homes had changed dramatically, and in December 16 of 2015, in the business section of the Atlanta Journal-Constitution, there was an article that said underwater homes are dropping. So that economy has changed. So more people are getting out from under their underwater mortgages and doing better, and basically, the value of their homes are going back to where they were a few years before. So that's a good indicator, as far as demographic studies are concerned, that the economy is improving. And Brad and I often use the same term, and that is modest in our projections, so this is a modest opportunity for improvement in our economy, and we feel good about that. So the next two or three slides are very simple in the fact that this is what we show the Accountability Department as a year, from one year to the next. And basically, these are our projections from one year to the next, and they were pretty much consistent with what we had thought they would be. We highlighted two, and that was Pebblebrook and Osborne. The overall numbers for high schools were almost exact. Pebblebrook was up about 100 students, and Osborne was down about 100 students. So we flipped, could be mobility, and it could be that we just missed it, but those are the only two areas at the high school that we showed any change at all, really, in what we had projected from a year ago, so we felt very good about our high schools. Now, I will tell you that the high schools are the easiest to project, because by the time families get to high school-age students, they pretty well try to stay where they are. And you can project those a lot easier, and you'll see in a slide or two, as we get down to the elementary schools, we had a few more adjustments to make. The bottom, onto the next slide? No, it's okay. It's perfectly okay. You'll see almost the same thing for the middle schools. There were very few adjustments that we had to make. We just simply wanted to show you that we made a few adjustments. The numbers overall are about the same, but there's a couple of elementary schools that may, or middle schools, that may have changed in population a little bit more than we had projected, so we highlighted those. The two yellow items at the bottom are just simply the number of students that you had last year by October FTE count and the number of students that we were projecting for October FTE count of the next school year. And then the elementary schools are the same. There's two pages for elementary schools, but you'll see where we've highlighted, and we're highlighting those only to let you know that there was a slight difference. The overall numbers are the same, but it's good every year to kind of take a look to make sure in case we missed it somewhat, and that allows administration to start producing allotments for schools and hopefully more accurately with this kind of information, and they do a great job with that, of course. And the last slide is just simply a summary, and it's pretty much everything that I just said, but I'll share a little bit just as a reminder. It's important for a one-year update. It shows that the original thinking has not changed. We feel very good about our projections. I think we told you a year ago that we would feel very good about our projections for a year or two or three, and then be debating whether or not we were accurate as years go along closer to 10, and any demographer in their truth statements would tell you that once you get out two or three or four years, things could change. So currently, this one-year update shows that the original thinking has not changed, the enrollment projections were as expected, so we feel very good being able to present to you today. The live births are obviously a very important factor. That bubble is going through, and behind it, we were predicting less students overall coming into your elementary schools, and this number that we looked at just this past month shows that that may change and show that in 2021, you'll have more students than we projected coming into the first grade. So that's important to know. Again, the third bullet there is something that I use, that Brad uses as well in his financial forecasting, and that is modest but positive. So we're very good about that and feel very good about that. The multifamily units have decreased, the single-family units have increased, and the last one is it's a great place to live, so people are staying. Madam Chairman, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Good job. Glad your numbers were so accurate. We appreciate that.
One year out.
It's good to get this confirmation on that, all right? Mr. Scamahorn?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
Let me start with getting my mic. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Mr. Wilson. Again, good job. Just a real quick clarification, excuse me, on the numbers charts on the end there, it's middle school, high school, elementary school, you have capacity status. Just as a clarification, are the negative numbers over or under?
Negative numbers are...
Well, just...
Yeah, I got you.
I don't know what chart you're on, but...
Negative numbers are showing that they're overcapacity.
Overcapacity, okay. Thank you. And you mentioned you count permits of new housing. Are those permits individual for new subdivisions? Or do they, does the contractor or developer get one big permit to build whatever they want to do?
I'm going to, I didn't print the 280 pages just simply because I chose to save a little paper for today, but I think I have five pages that I can show you where we just simply, it's line by line here it is. But we get from, this is from the county, and we get this from the cities, too. It's a line by line. I'm building a house, I can show you my house and what they believe it's worth, and the address and everything about it, and when the construction started, and it gives us, there's actually 280 of these pages. And matter of fact, if I can...
Madam Chair, he's asking.
I'm sorry, I was looking at your report.
I'll just hand it to you if you'd like. If it's okay, approach the Board.
Yes, please.
So that'll show that they list individual addresses, even though I may be building a 50-home, 100-home subdivision, they'll still list the new addresses for the permits?
Mr. Scamahorn, if you look at the bottom of that page, you'll see that that is page one of 280, and the reason for the length of that is it is individual.
Okay.
Individual units, individual homes.
Thank you. And you mentioned, did I get it right, elementary schools are not surveyed as far as population going up and down? Did I misunderstand that?
I don't think, I'm not sure, I don't think I said anything about surveyed.
Well, that's my word.
Oh, okay. Help me a little bit.
As far as counting the numbers, increases...
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we count every student.
I must have misunderstood something.
Well, I was going fast. I was going fast.
Okay. And is it your opinion that there should be a, does the annual study negate a major study, like every 10 years or every five years?
Our beliefs, and I believe the direction that came to us from the superintendent was that when you do a 10-year demographic study, you should review it every year. Now, this year, we're telling you that we feel like we're right on it, and what we had projected a year ago is consistent. We probably wouldn't be doing that two years from now. We would probably be coming to you and saying, we're going to have to do a deeper study. Because honestly, with this, and in this county, there are great examples, the Braves being one of them, that's going to be a game changer. Now, how big a game changer it is, we don't really know. So as they start and become a part of our community in Cobb, we're probably going to have to take a deeper look at it. Right now, we feel very good that what we did and gave to you a year ago is accurate, few minor little adjustments, and it's always good to update it. So today was a 10-page, or 13-page PowerPoint. Last year, the book was over 200 pages.
And I support that. That's why I wanted to get your opinion on it. And then finally, redistricting our school zones throughout the county, would you anticipate the data that you collect each year, particularly on the, I'll call it the major year, you know, when you do a deeper study? Would that give you, give you slash us a good indicator if we need to start looking at redistricting? Because some of our high schools are, you know, as you well know, pretty well full, or overfull, really.
If you recall, a few months ago, we presented at your request a classroom utilization study, and if you look at these documents down at the bottom, you'll see that you're at 102% or thereabout capacity, so you're full, which is a good thing. I can tell you a couple of metro districts around you are at 40% and 60% capacity, so they deal with this very differently, very differently. Here, we're full, we anticipate that we're going to stay full for the next few years, certainly in the high schools, and this allows you to have consideration for your next SLOST, building of schools, building of additions, and also redistricting.
And finally, so in planning our expansions of our schools and any new schools, we really need to be looking at our so-called specifications for across the county. Would you agree to that? Any changes? You know, whether our changes in how we build our gymnasiums, our auditoriums, or even a new school? We really need to be looking at, like, right now, everybody gets the same, or tends to get the same. So would you agree that we need to be looking at our specifications as we go along?
I think they are currently looking at your education specifications. I think there's a committee that's currently doing that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, and thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Wheeler.
Good morning, Mr. Wilson.
Good morning.
I'm looking at your charts here from, as compared to last year, I'm kind of concerned I represent Hill Grove High School, and I believe in the past, we were a growth school, and we're coming in number four. We've kind of, according to this, there's been a drastic change going to the number two overcapacity school. Was that correct?
Last year's October FTE for Pebblebrook was 25, 24.
Well, we did, you did a 10-year study on the growth of all these schools, and they were talking about Walton and Campbell and Pebblebrook. The immediate stuff, it's come in there. Hill Grove was a number four in that group with growth, but not in that same capacity. Looking at this, this is kind of different. It looks like Hill Grove has jumped almost to the top of the list here with 642 overcapacity. Is that a, is that trend going to continue year after year and get worse and worse and worse, according to what you've got, or do you have that information?
Well, I don't have last year's study with me, but I can, I can pretty well speak to that. On that particular slide, as I spoke to earlier, the two schools that have yellow highlights are schools that either decreased or grew differently than we had projected. So Pebblebrook went up 100 approximately, Osborne went down 100 approximately, and that's probably due to some mobility, because overall, our numbers were pretty accurate. The reason why Hill Grove is not highlighted is because our numbers for this year are pretty well close to the numbers that we projected for this year. So we projected this kind of growth for Hill Grove, and yes, Hill Grove is going to continue to grow for the next few years. It's that bubble that's coming through, that yes, there is a projection of continuation of growth. And, Mr. Wheeler, I'm sorry, I didn't bring my 10-year study, so I can't really tell you exactly how far out, exactly what the numbers are. This is just the yearly update, so I gave you one year. I'm sorry.
Okay, okay.
But we've got it.
Yeah, we'll get that.
It's still on your website.
Like I say, I'm just kind of curious, because it's, I'm very aware that the Hill Grove District is growing. We all know that. This is kind of concerning that this is a little bit, little bit different than what I was thought from last year.
Mr. Wilson, I'm with Mr. Wheeler in that I understand that the highlighted numbers for the, for the long-range projections are the only ones that change, but it looks to me, I was thinking Campbell was, again, we don't have our report with us, but I was thinking Campbell was much higher, and Hill Grove was much lower as far as being overcapacity.
What these numbers represent, and I didn't bring my 10-year study with me, but what these numbers represent is one column shows your October FTE count, and then on over shows the projection for next year. If we didn't highlight it, it is consistent with what we projected for next year in our 10-year study. And in some cases, we were five, 10 students off, and in several schools, we were two the number. So we didn't highlight that because those numbers are fairly consistent with what we projected.
I think what's confusing me, and probably Mr. Wheeler, too, Mr. Wheeler, this is just the, our range is just 16, 17. It's not the, not the 10-year.
Yeah, it's just one year.
It's just one year.
Yeah, I understand that. I'm just curious that, I mean, in these bubbles, and they're going to fluctuate and come and go, but like I say, it's concerning as a representative of that district that this number here is a little bit different. I was not aware that... I was not aware that.
I don't have the number to memory, but I can tell you it's not far off.
Pardon?
Yeah, I don't have the numbers to memory, but I can tell you, it's not far off of what we showed you a year ago. If it were more than 3% off, we yellow highlighted it. So we're close, we're relatively close.
Thank you. Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hello, Mr. Wilson. Just a quick question. When you were updating these numbers, and did you happen to get a feel for where the majority of the new housing units are going within the county? I'm just curious to hear what your thoughts are.
Yeah, and thanks for putting it that way, so I'll give you my thoughts. And I have those. East Cobb is holding its own very well. It is not growing quite like we may have thought, but it's growing and going to hold its own, and we see nothing different there at all. The growth that we may have missed, and it's kind of hard to articulate this, but it's at the extreme west Cobb area. Extreme west Cobb area. I mean, almost the county line, right in through there, we're seeing more growth than we had projected. Obviously, the Smyrna-Pebblebrook-South Cobb area is growing like we anticipated, and you see that through the Osburn-Hill Grove-South Cobb Campbell numbers. But it's pretty stable, where we thought it would be stable. And of course, it's easier to look at high schools than it is elementary schools. Just because elementary families tend to move a little bit more, there's a little more mobility there. But as far as a housing, the only concern we saw in housing, we saw everything good about housing, except there's a lot of senior developments.
Yep. The other thing, I was gonna, I was gonna cite something that was in the MDJ, and it's with Maleka Rivers, who leads the Cumberland CID. And she said that Cobb's largest job center will add 4,500 dwelling units in the multifamily housing market, which includes apartments, townhomes and condos, bringing about 10,000 new residents to this part of the county. So, and this is for the 2013 through the 2018 period. And I have, I don't think you have any way of matching up what she said with your numbers here. But there's going to be a fairly heavy concentration in near and around the Cumberland CID. And I think we're all pretty much aware of that, but that's coming.
Well, and you're absolutely correct. And if you remember, in our classroom utilization, we were showing the need for new schools in the Smyrna-South Cobb area for that.
All right, thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Wilson, for giving us this, providing us this data. I think it points out some disparities that we need to address. And, you know, looking at the live births, the first graders, it looks like we're off by around 400. But if you take that, divide it into the number of elementary schools we have, it's probably around 10 per school. So it's not, it's not a number that we cannot manage.
Correct, thank you.
But I think, you know, and it, from your projections, it shows this modest growth over the next few years. So it's not going to be like hundreds of, you know, a thousand new students in the next additional years in the future. And you alluded to the 280-page document that you have. Now, that breaks it down by year on your projections, just like we've had it in the past, is that?
The 280-page document I'm referring to is a 12-month document of showing every single building permit in the county for one year.
Okay, do we have data showing like we got last year, it's by year, yeah, by year? So that we see like 20, we went up to 2024. Will you, will the data show 2025 now?
Well, we can do that. Please remember that this was your one-year update. So this document really talks about one year, which, which is different than looking at 10 years like we did a year ago. But you're absolutely right on your comments, that yes, there's data that show all of that. We gave you a one-year, that's, that's the reason for that 280 pages. We wanted to look at every single building permit in the county this year, or 2015.
Because if you look at the numbers for elementary schools for 2024, if you sum all those up, it shows very plainly that we're over-capacity about 10 elementary schools in 2024. So technically, we could close 10 elementary schools in the next 10 years. Now, whether that will happen or not, I doubt it, but I think we will close some. But, and your data for live births show that, like you were talking about, this bubble is going to occur in the next 10 years. We're peaking out in the next 10 years. And so the next 10 years coming behind that is even going to be lower for my middle schools than for my high schools. So, you know, technically, you could say, okay, we built too many high schools eventually. But the disparity is not even, so, you know, and it's one of those things, you cannot, you cannot completely rectify that disparity because of where the population is centered. One of the things that I've noticed in the presentation and demographic studies is that it gives us part of the picture from a management and the board responsibility. And I feel like we need to have a more complete study or information from the superintendent that, what I would call a master plan. So, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion at this time. I move that the board commission the superintendent to develop a 10-year detailed master plan for utilization of all facilities, and that the superintendent at the April work session provide the scope and timeline to present this master plan to the board and to the Cobb County community.
Okay, a motion has been made, is there a second?
For discussion.
All right, Mr. Sweeney for discussion, okay.
Yeah, well, first of all, I have kind of a question. This isn't really an agenda item, so I don't know that can.
It is, we're, this is an agenda.
Well, he's presenting a demographic study, so a parliamentary question.
Well, I think, I interpreted his motion as really setting, as more procedural to, as to setting this for a later time to talk about it. But you seconded it, so it is now open for discussion.
So, you're, are you suggesting that, just, I mean, we're already doing a five-year capital plan, correct? So what's the, and as far as a 10-year forward look, what's the benefit of doing the 10-year forward look versus the?
The reason I use the 10-year is because it coincides with the demographic study. I would anticipate if we have a more comprehensive master plan that would include the demographic study and the utilization of our facilities, that each year, we take a look at it, which we're planning on doing on the demographic study, so that we update it and, you know, stay current as to what's happening each year. And this would be something that we could provide to the community as to the direction and what we're planning for the next 10 years, with understanding that every year, we're going to update it and make the adjustments that's necessary. So what I'm looking at is getting something that's very comprehensive as far as the public's understanding of what we're doing and where we're going. This is a means of letting the superintendent direct a study and come up with a master plan that the board could approve.
And I guess I'm a little confused, because we're, number one, I think Mr. Wilson has said the first five years are pretty definite. Once you get beyond five years, it's pretty much a guess. So I don't know how much time we need to concentrate on planning at that point. Also, I thought we were going to, we're going to be starting to build the SLOST notebook, which will be our planning guide for, you know, through the next SLOST. So that will take us pretty far into that. I don't know that we need something separate from that.
Well, SLOST is going to be just part of the demographics. The demographics is much broader than the SLOST notebook. SLOST is just going to be replacements and additions that we make to facilities and many more items and more projects. What I'm trying to do is relate a master study, a master plan, coincided and aligned with the demographic study so that we see what we, what we're facing, and we already kind of know what we're facing as far as population is concerned right now, because we have that data. What are we going to do with it? We got the data, now what are we going to do with it? So that's why I think we need a master plan as, okay, we've got the data, all right, what are we going to do? What's our master, what's our plans for the next 10 years? And as I mentioned earlier, I think we need to keep it updated each year so that as it changes, you know, we make the changes and the public knows exactly what we're doing. Right now, the public doesn't know what we're doing as far as utilization of our facilities.
Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I ask the superintendent a question? And this is related to the five-year capital plan. If you can kind of talk about, and I know this is something that has to be submitted to the state, and how this might tie into what I think Mr. Banks is trying to accomplish.
Yeah, we have to do a five-year facilities plan, is what we refer to it as, and that does have to be approved by the state. The target of it, or the intent of it, is to kind of shore up or queue up, if you will, capital outlay. So the projects that we're planning over the next five years will be, some of them will be having applications for capital outlay, reimbursement, funding affiliated and associated with those. And so that, that pretty much is, is what the five-year facilities plan is. And again, like you said, Mr. Sweeney, it has to be approved by the state. So that's, and then that, of course, we try to time that such that we have a five-year facilities plan and it's directly tied to the SLOST, because sometimes what we have is the timing gets off. And so we have a five-year facilities plan already approved at the state, and then we have a SLOST coming up and it's kind of out of sync. So we're trying to move in the direction of getting that timing synced up with the SLOST timeline, because obviously, capital outlay is a huge part of our construction program. But all of our construction, for the most part, is funded by SLOST. So it makes sense to tie those. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, it does. And the one thing about the five-year facility plan is it's only updated every five years. You know, and so we're talking about the updating of our demographic study on an annual basis. One of the things that I recognized long ago is that specifically with regard to Harrison High School. Harrison High School, I think their community actually exercised some form of a kind of their own master plan for that campus. That was done some time ago. And then I know that with Walton High School, something to that effect was done. It seems that some form of a master plan on a per-campus thing might make sense. And it's, it can be more general in nature, but it says, if we were to encounter something, what would we do at this school? And I know that's a much more comprehensive task, but if we're going to consider either expansion or, let's say, sunsetting schools for any reason, is to be able to incorporate that.
Yeah, and taking that a step further, exactly what you just said. So you can have the master plan for a campus, but the demographics being updated on an annual basis, that's, that's being done to better help us plan for facilities. Because in the past, we've had a five-year demographic study, and just like with the facility plan, we do the demographic study, and then we'd update it every five years. Well, once you get into year two, three, and four, especially year five, that data is, yeah, it's very moot to a certain degree. So, you know, as we look to the demographics being updated on an annual basis, that is so that we can better prepare for what we need to do with modifications, additions, renovations, and potentially new schools as we're looking to develop the SLOST project list at this point in time.
Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The comments that preceded, the ones that I'm about to make, I think answers my question. Madam Chair, my question is directed to our superintendent. Based upon what Mr. Banks has brought forth for the board to consider, and based upon what Mr. Sweeney has, has brought into the conversation, I feel like I'm hearing, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that coupling campus by campus plan with the demographic study, studies could potentially be a way forward based upon what Mr. Banks just said. Am I hearing that correctly? And if I'm, if I'm not, I would like your insight to Mr. Banks', Mr. Banks's proposal from this vantage point. Is it justified, or is it, is it justified, or is it overkill? Those are my two questions, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wilson, you have, you look like you wanted to respond. Once he said overkill, I was in. I don't know that in facility planning, there is such a thing as overkill. I think, and I will tell you that this county does an excellent job with its facility planning. And it goes far beyond just the facilities department. Your maintenance department can tell you today, every roof that needs to be replaced, every school that needs to be painted. And that's part of master planning, is to know when all of that is supposed to happen. Now, Gwinnett County and Cobb County are unique in the fact that I don't think they've ever been under-capacity as a district. So they master plan all the time. Other districts around Metro, as they start declining in enrollment, or their schools get older, they have to do master planning because they have to figure out a way to close some of the schools. There are two counties in Metro that are at 40% and 60% capacity, okay? And that's just what happened to them over the years. And because parents and communities love their schools, they don't want them closed. So they wind up with more schools than they need, and they can't close them because students like that little school of 200. That's where master planning is at its strength, is it comes in and it helps you as a board and your community understand that that school that was built in 1940 truly needs to be closed. And so that's, so there is a real purpose for master planning. You, as a district, have always done master planning, just in a different version. And so when your superintendent stressed to you the importance of a yearly demographic, that was part of it. Then we came at his request and did the classroom utilization. And that probably also needs to be done yearly, because that is a form of master planning. So you're really following all the right steps. You do your demographic yearly, you do your classroom utilization, and then you, you just continue on with master planning services to make sure that you are touching every school. Because if you recall, in the 2012 presentation for SLOST, one of the things that I recommended was that you start considering closing schools built in the 50s, because that was your oldest schools. And that would be a form of master planning. Is that school that was built in 1950, has it been maintained to a level where it can still be utilized to the services that you wish without having to spend millions of dollars on it? You know, do you keep it up, or do you just build a new one? And so that's some of your discussions over the years. So there is a good concept of master planning. I would just tell you that you're already moving that direction now. And I think what Mr. Banks is probably suggesting is that you just continue that to a greater level. And, but Cobb County and Gwinnett County are both known for having a very good handle on their facilities. Not that I'm trying to compliment Gwinnett County for any reason at all, but.
All right, thank you, Mr. Wilson. Any other, Mr. Scamhorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think what I heard is that we're already doing this.
To some, to some degree.
Okay, I'm good with that then. Although the motion is commendable, it may be redundant. And so I think unless somebody disagrees with me, I think I know where I stand now. And thank you, Madam. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Is there any other discussion? All right, so we have a motion and a second. Mr. Banks, do you need to restate your motion that we'd be voting on?
I would ask, I'll give Ms. LaRosa a copy of the motion, so she'll have it.
Okay.
The exact wording.
Okay. Everyone clear on what we'd be voting on? All those in favor of Mr. Banks' proposal, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? Okay. Did you get that, Ms. LaRosa? Okay. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Wilson?
I'd just like to say that I appreciate the presentation, and I appreciate the support from the Board to allow us to continue on the annual update of the demographic study because, you know, as I said, once you get data that is aged and then maybe not as consistent as it should be, it is very tough to make decisions based upon that data. So having it updated on an annual basis helps us tremendously, especially as we're planning for the SPOST project list. So as we get into the planning for the next SPOST, obviously, the purpose of SPOST is to fund all of our capital projects. And being able to know, you know, the most precise information we can have as far as student capacity and where the growth is going to occur in our district, that is the best that we can do, and the most efficient utilization of the taxpayers' money that they have entrusted us in. So I appreciate the Board allowing us to continue on that path.
And even though we've mentioned, you mentioned schools in the 50s and so forth, some of them are in very good shape, and they're going to certainly continue to be used. I didn't want anyone out there to take that and have some kind of panic that we might be closing schools. We've made no decisions along those lines.
And obviously didn't make, say those comments as intended that way. Because we've done a great job keeping schools up and in great condition.
Exactly. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. We appreciate it. This is great information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll get back to our agenda, and that brings us to Board Business. The first item is pre-K program focusing on literacy and comprehension. Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I certainly appreciate the opportunity to bring this agenda item. I think as I've done, previously done, I want to start with why I feel like this is good for our district. I think that at some, sometime in the past, we had a pre-K program in our district, and for whatever reason, I know it went away. But what I have found in our district, since I've had the privilege of being on the Board, is that when I go into schools in my post and I talk with principals and teachers, one of the things that's come up over the years is, especially when you're looking at schools that have a heavy concentration of Spanish-speaking students, low-income students, students who come from homes there that are not rich in print, is that the children basically come to school woefully prepared for school. And it has been an age-old, age-old issue, especially, Madam Chair, if I might direct this comment to you, in the areas that we represent. There's an age-old issue. So in turn, what has happened is the kid comes to school, they don't know the letter Q from the letter T. And then that teacher who gets that child is starting from next to nothing. And with that being, to me, that is like a systemic issue. That is a structural systemic issue that we have that I think needs to be addressed. And one of my latest visits in the school, I had the pleasure of being with Dr. Grant Rivera, I was at a particular school and with an assistant superintendent. And this, without prompting, this principal said the same thing. And it got me to thinking about, wow, what if we did a pilot or a proof-of-concept pre-K program in one of the schools, or maybe two of the schools, where this is a huge issue? I think that what it does is it continues to bolster our very clear plan of what we're doing, our intentional plan around literacy and computation. If I get you when you're four in our district, by the time you get in kindergarten, then I won't be starting from that same place. And the research is mind-boggling on this. There was a study done two decades ago with three-year-olds. And it says that a three-year-old that comes from an affluent household, now affluent is considered 69K for the entire household, which I don't consider affluent, right? It says that those kids have heard words millions of more times than a child that comes from a low-income family, and low-income family was considered $23,000. Then, they conducted another study three years ago, and they went from, these were three-year-olds, they went down to 18-month-olds. And this was jaw-dropping. They said by the time an 18-month-old is two years old, that that child has heard 30 million more words than a kid from a low-income family. Now, to me, how that filters into Cobb is that we face that reality of those children coming into our schools, and I think that one of the ways that we can stem that tide, not only stem the tide, but change the dynamic, is if we have a pre-K program, or pre-K programs in targeted schools. Now, I'm very mindful that it's more than just, hey, we need a pre-K program. I know that it is a logistical issue, it's a budgetary issue, it's things of that nature. But at the very minimum, what I would like to ask, Madam Chair, is if the administration takes a look at that and see how feasible and plausible instituting or implementing a pre-K program would be as a proof of concept within, you know, whatever, one school, two schools, whatever the case might be, because I think it will go a long way in continuing what we're doing around literacy and computation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. And I know this is something we've looked at in our system. Mr. Superintendent, can you give us an update on where we are on that, or what the plans are?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Mary Elizabeth Davis, our Chief Academic Officer, to comment on that. And we have done some initial inquiry, but like you said, Mr. Morgan, there's some significant, not significant, there are a number of things that have to be addressed, and we have been looking at a possible timeline. One caution that I would throw out is because if we did a proof-of-concept, obviously, that, you know, that intends to be bigger upon implementation. For that reason, we are taking a very deliberate approach in the initial analysis that we've conducted. So I don't want to, I don't want to set the bar too high as far as what we would feel comfortable of doing when, but because there are some significant issues. I mean, one is transportation, for example. Are there facility modifications that would have to be done? Because when you're talking about pre-K versus kindergarten, there is a significant difference, not just in how you teach and what you teach, but the facility itself. So, Mary Elizabeth, if you want to comment on that further?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. As this agenda for this Board meeting has been developed, we were well aware of Mr. Morgan's interest in this particular topic. So we've been able to do some preliminary research. One, what are our metro neighbors doing in this field? Two, what would be revenue sources, funding sources for this type of model? And then, three, really, what is an implementation feasibility if we were to play that out? I do want to start by acknowledging that early learning is prevalent in the literature right now and is definitely the focus of much attention. Kindergarten really is the new first, maybe even second grade. There is high academic expectations for our kindergarten children, and there are some real challenges for our kindergarten teachers to bridge any gaps from any child's entrance into their schooling experience. And so this is a very ripe conversation for our community to consider. We did, as a district, have a pre-K program. Its last year of existence was in 2007, 2008. We had a little over 500 students served in those years at 19 different schools. My understanding is that the discontinuation of that particular model really was due to capacity issues and the ability to actually provide space at specific facilities in order to serve, really, seven grades in the elementary building, not just the sixth grades in the elementary building, K through five. I also think it'd be important to note, some of our surrounding communities, Atlanta, DeKalb, Cherokee, and Fulton, all have some model of a pre-K program. And in DeKalb, it's up to 2,000 students that are served, and in Cherokee, it's as low as 200 students served. But Paulding, Forsyth, Douglas, Gwinnett, and currently Cobb do not have a general education pre-K program, but of course, all do have a special needs pre-K program. Currently, we have about 450 students served in our special needs pre-K programs at 75 different schools, and that has been an ongoing academic environment funded through IDEA. So let's talk about the feasibility of what our future might hold here in Cobb County. We've estimated that it is approximately $100,000 per 20 children in a pre-K classroom. That's everything from the teacher and assistant teacher, classroom materials and furniture, as well as sort of the annual ongoing operating expenses of consumable materials that are in that classroom. That averages out about $4,500 per student in that pre-K environment. We've also begun to look at what facilities might currently be reasonable spaces to accommodate a pre-K classroom. And while I think it'd be premature to articulate specific locations, that could be an option for us to make some prioritized decisions about locations. And then I think probably most significant in the back of all of our minds is really the funding source. So the state of Georgia has several funding sources that are worthy of our investigation further. First of all, most districts currently who do offer a pre-K program actually offer it with their general operating funds. However, Bright From the Start and Georgia Lottery are two untapped funding sources for our district to be considered. Both are competitive application processes, so they're not guaranteed sources, nevertheless worthy of investigation. And Title I is an eligible source for our pre-K programming, and that is obviously something potentially more present in our district already that might allow for something more immediate than a competitive grant process moving forward. I don't want to suggest, however, that Title I funding is an easy and obvious source of funds. There is no new Title I funding. We don't currently have excess Title I funding, so we would obviously need to redirect how current funds are being used and stop offering some services in order to extend and expand to a pre-K service model. A couple of other things, just for the benefit of our conversation, in case it's been a while since you've thought about pre-K experiences. Pre-K is open to children who are four years old by September 1st or earlier, and so it's not a three-year-old program. This would be a four-year-old program. It is 180 days. Transportation is not required, although DeKalb and Fulton do both provide transportation within the attendance zone. And the max class size is 22, so we don't think about going beyond that 22 number with that one teacher. As we've done this analysis of really what's happening in our community and our neighboring districts, and sort of some of the history of pre-K in our district, I want to acknowledge that I believe it would be an accelerated pace to consider opening a pre-K program by fall of 2016, but not an impossible pace. I do think there are some significant considerations for how you have access to the small number of slots that a limited number of funds could provide. So whether that be a lottery process of some nature, that would need to be developed. And I do think that the sustainability and growth of this type of model needs to be very seriously considered. We certainly don't want 2007, 2008 to come upon us too quickly without having really played this out over the next 10 years or so in how it would grow and how it would be sustained. So at this point, that really concludes what I consider sort of some context to serve for this conversation, and maybe some background for your consideration as we proceed. So, Mr. Superintendent, turning back to you.
May I ask, Ms. Davis, what then would your recommendation on this be? You said you didn't feel that we could be ready for this fall, but what would our next step be if we're interested in pursuing this?
So I think it'd be an accelerated pace to be ready for this fall, but I don't think it would be impossible. I think if we were to look at this fall, it needs to be limited to one, no more than two sites, keeping in mind that that is only 40 children that would be served in that sort of zero year of implementation. I think a more, a more thorough approach is to use this coming year as a planning year and to have a strong start in implementation for fall 2017. But at this point, we'll leave it to the leadership of our Board to provide guidance.
Any comments? Mr. Chastain.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If I may ask a question of Ms. Davis. Out in the community where we see a lot of preschools advertised, the private people are handling pre-K, is it safe to assume that they, if they are in the Bright From the Start database on the Georgia Education website, that they are offering the four-year-old pre-K already?
Yes. There is actually a set of curriculum standards that any privately operated pre-K, preschool, or daycare program offers, that they would align their content and curriculum to, and that's exactly what a public school would align their content and curriculum to, in that Bright to the Start curriculum.
All right. So would we be augmenting what's already happening, competing with what's going on there? Or would we anticipate that once we open up pre-Ks, we would be pulling from these other schools and creating, like, I mean, if we're talking, what, 40, we would start out with 40 kids? I'm just trying to anticipate how many we would be drawing from the other people, or is there a reason that if there is a demand, I guess, for the public school pre-K, is that an economic thing, or is it about transportation? I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there, just thinking out loud. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure. I think that's a complex question that I certainly don't want to presume how private daycares are operating and how really they fit within a public school system. But what I would add is that I believe our discussion is focused on communities that may have less density in their pre-K private options and be able to therefore fill a gap in the early learning experiences that children in those communities currently have access to.
If the students we're talking about are coming into our schools not knowing letters and things like that, can we assume that they either, their families either have not had access to effective pre-K programs? At least, they certainly haven't been effective if they're coming to us with this level. So it's not like we're trying to usurp or take business away from our functioning pre-K programs, but we're talking about students who don't have access to that quality of instruction, I think.
And if I could add, we like to talk about our early learners as being in one of three environments. In a formal schooling environment, somewhere between the ages of birth to five, in a homeschooling environment with intentional homeschooling instruction happening in those years, birth through five, and in an informal educational environment, which would be a non-structured environment that might have less structure to the actual instruction that's happening. So all of our children are certainly getting an education in the environment in which they are growing. are growing up. However, it's the degree to how structured that is and how closely that is linked to the kindergarten learning expectations that come very quickly at age five.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question to Mr. Morgan. Have you looked at the concept of privatizing the pre-K program as we do some other programs in our system now? Where the funding would actually come from the general fund, but it would be contracted out to a private entity to do what you want to do as far as pre-K. And I understand the value of early learning and four-year-olds and earlier. It does make a big difference in the later years.
Madam Chair, if I might respond to Mr. Banks. No, I have not thought about it from an avenue of it being privatized. My thoughts to this point has been just getting it out and then allowing superintendent and his staff to give us feedback as to what might be the most viable or feasible way to potentially make something like this happen.
Okay. Now, second question, from a legal standpoint, this would be directed at Mr. Doyle. If we did go this route of privatization, are we legally able to do that similar to what we do with an ombudsman program?
I would say you have legal options of doing that, but because those programs are tied to grants, you would really have to look carefully at how you're going to try to do funding for that. If you're just paying it out of the general fund, you probably could hire contractors, but then that would raise other questions about why you want to outsource that function as opposed to having your own employees do it and have the management in control that way.
Well, one reason may be cost, but we don't know yet. But it is an option that could be explored, because what Mr. Morgan is proposing, I think, has merit to it. It's just how do we accomplish it?
Go ahead.
So one thing that I need to throw out here is that regardless of the funding source, we need to be very cognizant of anything additional budget-wise is going to have to come from somewhere. So, that being said, what Mary Elizabeth was alluding to as being a planning year is that before we kick off the proof of concept, we have to have in place, in my opinion, a very thorough analysis of ROI. And I hate to take it down to that level, but, and by ROI, what I mean is return on investment. So if we're going to put money into pre-K, what we need to do is we need to very thoroughly study those students that have gone through the pre-K as we initiate the proof of concept, and then compare those students against students that are entering kindergarten in the same school that have not gone through pre-K, such that we can determine, okay, have we got a bang for our buck? Are the students that have gone through pre-K academically in a much better place? How much of a better place? And do we need to enhance it? Do we need to think about the areas in which we offer it? So I think that, I just wanted to provide some context around, when we have discussed this, what the analysis and research that we're thinking that we need to do as far as planning it, because obviously, we just don't want to have a knee-jerk and just, you know, throw it out there and expect, you know, that automatically our, you know, test scores and students and academic performance is going to go through the roof. We definitely want to be very deliberate in the areas that need additional resources, because like you said, Madam Chair, we are seeing when students come into kindergarten at different levels of preparedness and where they fall, we need to do something to address that as we move forward, because obviously, we have a significant focus on reading and on grade-level reading. And anything we can do to address that is certainly going to be a benefit for our students. But I just kind of wanted to provide that context in, as we discuss whatever funding source, again, whatever funding source it's going to be, it's going to be a funding requirement as it implements and as it grows. So I hope that helps.
Mr. Morgan, you had another comment? Mr. Scamhorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to thank the superintendent for his remarks are just dead-on. And I think somewhere in there, you may have said too, is I would be curious as to how widespread that the program, if it got off the ground, would we be as far as the county? Would it just be certain locations, or would it be offered throughout the county? Because there's low income, you know, throughout the county. And so I hope we can get your remarks written down or whatever, Mr. Superintendent, because that's what I would be looking for, to support what seems to be a good initiative, but it needs to be thought through. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Morgan.
Thank you again, Madam Chair. And this is redundant, but I think it is worth saying. I really appreciate what you just said, Chris, because too often, I think, in the public sector, you know, there's feel-good stuff that goes out there. You know, it looks like it's, you know, you name a program, oh, that should have, but there is, we don't drill down to the effectiveness. Is this being effective? Are we monitoring, and do we have the type of oversight? In any type of pre-K program that we put forward, I feel very good in knowing that it's going to be something that's thorough, that's thought out, and that we are, I'm not afraid to say it, ROI. I think that's precisely, that has to be the intent and the execution of any pre-K program that we might have in the future. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So then, can we settle on the fact that we would like the superintendent's staff to investigate this, not to put it on a back burner, but for serious consideration for the next budget year? Not this coming year, but the next, and bring us information and suggestions on that? Okay?
Absolutely. And I'll also go a step further, because even through this budget year, we will continue to do the analysis, because I think it's very important to have enough runway for the board to be prepared, to know ahead of time. So we don't need to wait until we get into next year's budget cycle and then say, oh, yeah, here's the pre-K, and it's, you know, X number of dollars. So we will continue to update the board, starting now, on what we think will be a good utilization to at least have the proof of concept kickoff. And then we can do some extrapolation from that data to see, okay, here's what it would cost to scale it, here's what we think we need this. I don't think, I'm going to go ahead and say, I don't think that we want to entertain a district-wide pre-K. Number one, we don't have the facility space to do that. So I think it needs to be very targeted and very deliberate as to what areas we would offer that. I'm not saying certain areas of the county, because like to your point, Mr. Scamhorn, there's low income in all areas of the county. But we'll have to be very cognizant of the facilities and where we have that access. And then, like Mary Elizabeth said, how do we award those slots, you know, in that regard? And transportation is huge. That's going to be a huge issue there. But, so, we will absolutely not put this on the back burner, but light a fire under our acceleration of getting the board information so that we can be very ready to kick this off if the board deems that that's the direction we want to go.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Chastain.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just one more, and I'll, if I may, I'll direct this to the superintendent. I have, my oldest grandson just turned four, so I'm listening. I've got the antennas up. I'm just curious, because I don't know, when a parent registers a child for kindergarten, is there a space on the form that asks, have you been in a preschool? And do we find out where? So that, because with what Ms. Thayer said earlier, it just makes me wonder if we're gathering data, and if so, are we looking at it to know if students are coming with no pre-K and they're coming in the school, or if they're coming from one of the private sources right now, that we might be able to report back on what we're seeing? Thank you.
And I don't know the answer to that question, but it's a very good question, because like you said, every bit of data, okay, so I'm being told from the gallery that no is the answer to your question. And there again, it would be voluntary, you know, it's not something we could require. So there would be some question as to, you know, how much resources would be applied to confirming that information? And that's why I spent a good deal of time talking about the proof of concept and how we needed to really analyze the ROI as we move forward, because in doing the ROI, at least in our environment, we'll have control of that set of data.
Thank you. Before we leave board business, there is one other thing we need to cover, and I need to explain why it's not on our agenda in an effort to be totally transparent on things. Mr. Morgan requested that we look again at parental involvement, parental engagement proposals, and the one that was presented had a punitive element to it in not giving graduation tickets. My ruling was that the board had already voted on that, that we did not support punitive measures when it dealt with parental engagement. We wanted to look at positive ways. So that was my ruling, with the understanding with Mr. Morgan, that if there were two members of the board who had voted against the proposal, who were willing to change their stance on that, then we would go forward with the item. So I learned yesterday that Mr. Wheeler and Mr. Banks did want that brought back on the agenda. So, Mr. Morgan, we will now talk about parental engagement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a crucial, non-negotiable type of issue that I think we have to find some substantive solution to. Prior to me starting, I want to say again, as I started with the pre-K agenda item, as to why, why this is important. This is important and crucial on a macro level, because I think that, without objection, I feel safe in saying that when you have parents engaged and involved in a child's education, that child is much more likely to be a success, not only a successful student, but a positive and productive citizen after they leave us. To me, the undermining of that is this. When I look at the spectrum in education, I thought about my third-year-old, my third-grade daughter, who's now at Harmony Leland, and I'm sure some parents will be able to relate to this, they have this thing called Class Dojo. Have you ever heard of Class Dojo? But Class Dojo basically monitors what that kid does in a given day. Did you turn your homework in? Were you respectful? And it monitors how you do. And kids can earn points, and kids can lose points. I'll go a step farther with students. You do what you should do in the class, you pass. You don't do what you should do in the class, you fail. Teachers, you step into the classroom from year to year, if you don't do a satisfactory job, if you do a satisfactory job, you have the opportunity to continue your employment. If you don't do a satisfactory job, and I'm oversimplifying this, but you could be out of a job. Same thing with principals. So in my mind, when I look at the spectrum, the spectrum in which how we operate as a district, there is, there is an accountability metric for all the pressure points, with the exception of parents. There is no pressure point for parent does not, does not do, not even a minimum, there is nothing on that that says, okay, parent, you did not do this, so this is the consequence. Or you did this, so this is what you earned. Now, in my mind, before I get to the actual plan, the merits of the plan, I want to say I think I live my life believing that privilege should be earned. It should not just be given. Privilege should be earned. It's not something that should be given. And I feel like we, right now, have a system that's shortchanging us in its futility, because we are not, we need to do a better job, and I'm including myself, of addressing the elephant in the room when it comes to parent engagement involvement. First time I brought the proposal, it was the sentiment of the board that it was punitive in nature. Well, what I have attempted to do, with the help and assistance of many, including Educators First, is to devise a paradigm or a potential model that can be seen as an incentive-based paradigm that has accountability. Now, let me try as best as I can to try to explain the plan. A parent, we're talking about ninth graders at Pebblebrook, will have a menu of options in a school year. For the sake of this conversation, let's just say it's parent-teacher conference, road to graduation meeting, curriculum night, open house, be a board member on the PTSA school council. And let's just say, for the sake of this conversation, that of those, a parent has to reach the standard of getting 15 credits in a given school year. Now, let's just say all of them, all of the different options are five credits apiece. So you don't even have to do it all. But you need to earn 15 credits in a given school year. Now, here's where it happens. What I am presenting is this. If a parent does not, in any way, shape, or form, participate, they say, they blow it off, I'm not involved, I'm not engaged, you still are allotted, your kid graduates, when your kid graduates, two graduation tickets. You didn't do anything. You just showed up at graduation, and don't nobody know you but your kids, because nobody's seen you in those four years. However, what I've learned is the allotment for tickets, I don't know if it varies from school to school, but I spoke with a Pebblebrook parent who told me that the allotment is 10. Don't know if that's the case, high or low. Let's just say, for the sake of this conversation, it is. It varies. Okay. Whatever the allotment might be. Now, to earn your full allotment is predicated upon your involvement, engagement through your child's matriculation. Now, in my mind, this is an incentive-based program where, hey, you don't do anything, you still have access. But to earn the full allotment, you're going to have to be engaged and involved in the points, not the points, the credits, just like you do in school, you accumulate them. The same way a kid accumulates credits in school to graduate. One other thing I think is worth noting, a couple of things I think is worth noting. From year to year, parents who have earned the requisite points, accumulated the requisite points, there will be some type of reward or incentive for that child. For example, 50% off a season pass at Six Flags from year to year. Doing my best to reward this, but also putting a standard in place that if you don't, if you don't do what's expected, you're not getting the same level of rewards as the parents who are. Still, what is maintained, and I want to thank Educators First for assisting with this, parent-teacher conference, road to graduation meeting, I still maintain, it can be accomplished, face-to-face, telephone call, or virtually. In addition, one other quick thing I want to say about the district's responsibility. In addition, one other quick thing I want to say about the district's responsibility. When these meetings are happening, or would take place, these are the following ways that the district, or we're talking about a particular school, will contact that parent. Now, this is a mandate for the district. A telephone call, mass text message, put it at social media, email, school's website, signage, and a letter. Now, it's hard for me to believe somebody said, I did not know. Not only that, 30 days out, 15 days out, a week out. And most of this stuff is easy to do because it's electronically based, but the letter would just, we would just do that twice. Now, in my mind, this is a plan that I hope checks off all the boxes in terms of raising the level of engagement and involvement for parents so that we can move forward as we continue to infuse a new culture at Pebblebrook High School. And Madam Chair, I yield the floor to see if there might be any questions, comments, questions or comments about this particular plan. Thank you.
Mr. Morgan, if I'm understanding correctly, the, what you've outlined today is different from what you presented earlier because it's, it's not as punitive. Is that correct?
Madam Chair, that is, yes, yes, yes.
So it's changed since we did not.
It has changed.
Okay. We're going to have to nail something down at some point to see where we're going.
Yes.
So if I'm understanding correctly, then your, your, the incentive of Six Flag tickets, there's nothing that would prohibit a school from doing that now. Any school can give out things like that anytime they want to. If I'm understanding correctly, then the two elements that you would have for board consideration would be limiting the number of graduation tickets and then instead of, you're saying that at Pebblebrook then where, where maybe Osburn gets 10 tickets, Pebblebrook would be allowed two, but then you could earn more.
Yes, based upon what your allotment, the allotment is for that given school.
So that would be one thing. And then at Pebblebrook, you would require that they do all of the things that you're saying now for every meeting on your list there. And I, I don't know what we're doing now, so I don't know whether that's an addition or not.
In terms of notification, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
Yes, in terms of notification, these are the things, because I don't want a parent to say, I didn't know, you didn't get in contact with me and, you know, so I want to make sure that the school is doing its part to make sure that it's communicating.
Okay, so are those the two elements then today that we, you want us to talk about or see if there's interest in moving forward on any of this?
Yes, any and all parts of it that we want to, yes, let's, let's have a conversation about it.
All right. Any discussion? Mr. Scamahorn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the board's aware, I, I voted in favor of the other proposal and I applaud Educators First and Mr. Morgan for improving greatly on it. I would like to ask though, if the staff and superintendent's staff had a ample time to look at this and/or do we need further study? Or, and I guess, I guess another question might be for Mr. Morgan as well and/or the superintendent, is this document we just now, is it considered an outline or definitive? So I can, that's where I am right now. Could I get some responses on that before I move forward?
I think it's new to everyone today, so I'm sure you haven't had it prior, right? So.
Yeah, so, so to answer the question, you know, I would need to make sure that we can, that a school can do what the district's responsibilities are listed without additional cost or burden or that kind of thing. So I would need to, I would need to find out about that. So to answer your question point blank, yeah, we would need to, to discuss this, check with the school. And then I'm looking at the, the number of points because I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly as well, Mr. Morgan. So you're saying 15 points a year, 60 points by the end of the senior year. So it's, it's basically a four-year deal. It's not like a, I mean, it is an ongoing deal, but one of the things that I would ask is what happens to a student that comes and is not at Pebblebrook for the entire four years? So how would we, that, that would need to be covered. I'm not asking for an answer, but that would need to be covered and addressed.
May I ask a response? Yes, it would be prorated. So if I'm, if I come my junior year, you know, I'm there my junior year, just prorated, yeah, you need to have 30. Oh, one other quick thing is that in terms of this information, this plan is recommending that the parent liaison at the school is the point person. So if I'm the parent liaison and Chris is the teacher, after parent-teacher conference, Chris gives me the sign-in sheets. So I'm getting it, so it's warehoused one particular place as opposed to a teacher having to try to keep all love in, in things, give it to the parent liaison, parent liaison can, can file it and report it and things of that nature. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are you suggesting that the, the accountability piece would be in the hands of a parent and not a school official?
No, I'm just, no, I'm not saying it in their hands.
Parent liaison is a position.
The position, right.
Okay.
Yes.
Not a parent. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, my bad, my bad.
I had the same question.
My bad, yeah, that was that education jargon coming out of me, I apologize. A position at the school, yes, not a parent.
Okay. It is adding paperwork, but it's not.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Wheeler, you had comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, as I stated earlier, I'm in support of parental involvement and I commend Mr. Morgan for bringing, bringing this, this is definitely different. I think like our, Mr. Scamahorn and Mr. Ragsdale said, I'd like to see a discussion from, from some, from various groups, getting input from parent group, from staff, and going off of this one and to get the, the best option. I think there's still going to be a lot of questions, is like, like Chris said, with the move-ins, what do we do with them? Is Six Flags already definitely committed to, to doing these tickets? What constitutes a parent conference? If I run into you in the grocery store and say, hey, your son did good today in a history test, is that good enough or does he have to come up to the school? I mean, I think there's some things that, like I say, the ball is rolling and commend Mr. Morgan for getting it going, but.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. And I agree with you, I don't think anyone up here or in our school system thinks we should not be encouraging more parental engagement. It's a serious problem in our schools. I think some of the things we've brought up, if what are we doing now as, as far as notifications? What's the cost on this? Do we have input from Pebblebrook? I don't think as a board we need to do something to Pebblebrook. I think if they don't buy into it, so we got an input from that school. So I think there are some things that need to be, those particular things may be looked into by the, by the superintendent's staff. Do you feel comfortable with that, Mr. Morgan? Before we, we, just like we don't want to do, we don't want to have a knee-jerk on pre-K, we don't want to on this either. We want to make sure what we do is in the best interest of our students and that it has a good chance of being successful.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to respond. Yes, I most definitely think that, that is a good step. And I also think it's worth mentioning that I'm having ongoing conversations with people like the executive board at Pebblebrook and the schools that feed into it. Next Wednesday, listen to this, see if I was your, your representative, I'm actually treating them to appetizers at O'Charley's while we had a meeting. You hear that?
I heard it.
You heard that, right?
I heard it.
No, 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 no. Y'all, y'all, y'all pee me, y'all pee, y'all, I was about to, let me lead along. It's at 6 o'clock, O'Charley's in Osteo. But nevertheless, ongoing conversations, Madam Chair, is a point that I'm making to get the input and feedback from people who would potentially be, you know, direct partners in some type of proposal. But I do think, thoroughly thinking through logistically how this might work, I think is, is beneficial for us all.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. And I commend you for taking a concept that we all believed in and taking the negativity that we, that no one here really felt, or most of us didn't feel comfortable with and making it a positive thing because again, it's something we all need to be doing. We need to be finding ways throughout our community that we make, can make responsible parenting a priority in our community. So we appreciate that. So can we do this then? Mr. Superintendent, ask you to study the points that we talked about and come back and tell us the feasibility and the school buy-in of this proposal. And if we understand, well, you, we have it now in writing this morning, so, okay. All right?
Do you want us to bring, when do you want us to bring that back?
When can you?
For the not-meeting discussion or, or next work session or how do you?
Well, I don't think there's a crisis, so if, to get next work session so that then we could, if it's a voting issue, then bring it up at the next meeting?
Sure.
Next voting meeting, okay. That work? That sufficient time for you, Mr. Ragsdale? Okay. All right, thank you. We're going to break in just a second, but do we want to do the other item on the superintendent's report?
Sure.
Before we break?
This is the, obviously, Ms. Jackson already mentioned that this is School Board Appreciation Week, so we have your, your recognition there, the certificate that I signed, so don't be trying to put that up on eBay or anything, you know, so. But in all seriousness, we definitely appreciate what you guys do. It's definitely a sacrifice of time and effort and resources that, that all of you commit and we appreciate all the hard work and, and really the cohesiveness to really about our one-team-one-go student success because it starts with us, superintendent and the board. And if we're not together as one team, we can't very well roll that out to the rest of our employee base and, and then have our one goal of student success. So I appreciate the cohesiveness that we have and look forward to even being more cohesive over the next year and getting everything that we need to get accomplished for our students done because ultimately that's, that's why we exist. So I appreciate all of the time that you guys commit to doing this job. It's, you know, you obviously don't do it for the money, but we definitely appreciate everything that you do. And I'm sure that you'll be receiving communications and things from schools as well over the course of the week. So again, we just appreciate what you guys do for us.
Thank you, Mr. Ragsdale. And I think I can speak even for those that have, have slipped out for our early break, I guess, that we appreciate working with you. It's, it's important to us that we have the support of the superintendent's staff and that makes things very nice, but mainly the privilege of representing our schools and our school areas, that's the rewarding part of this and we have so much to be proud of in that area. So again, it's, it's, I think we would all share that it's our pleasure to serve this county and these, these teachers, principals, and students. Mr. Morgan?
Yes, I want to echo what you said, Madam Chair. I have colleagues who are in different districts who serve in this capacity and it's alarming to me how there is, there is not a lot of verbal jousting or debate or discussion. And, you know, the superintendent is in his or her silo and the board is expected to be robotic. And I think, Chris, even though, I mean, you're the superintendent, as you said, you set the tone, I just want to say again, I, I thank you for your receptivity. Whether you agree or disagree, at the very minimum, you'll listen to each and every one of us. And I want to thank my colleagues since, it's next week, about the, the, though it can, sometimes it's, it can be frustrating and sometimes it could be very fun, I appreciate the authenticity that I believe this board has when it comes to how we operate. And so, this is the first time I ever say something for Georgia School Board Appreciation Week, but I appreciate that and I appreciate you guys also. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Okay, it's 10:18, so let's take a 10-minute break, that give everyone sufficient time. All right, we'll be back at 10:28. Now, we'll get on with our agenda. That brings us to Agenda Item Number One. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, members of the board. This is the monthly item of recurring authorization of school properties disposal per District Administrative Rule DO-R. I believe all of the board members have received an electronic copy of that list. Be happy to answer any questions.
Do you have a motion for consent? Mr. Scamhorn, motion for consent, a second? Do we need a second? Okay, we don't need a second. Okay, great. Okay. Item Number Two.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'm going to ask John Adams, I believe, to come and bring the remainder of the Agenda items.
Yes, sir. Good morning. I'm proud to present the next. Agenda Item Number Two.
Do you need a chair?
I'm close. I think I'll be okay, and I need the exercise, but if it was eight, I might need a stool at least. Agenda Item Number Two, Recommendation for Authorization to Purchase 125 School Buses from Bluebird Gansie and Thomas Peach State Freightliner. Those are two different companies. We're going to recommend utilizing the statewide contract to purchase a total of 125 buses, 75/72 passenger buses, and 50/48 passenger special needs buses from those two vendors. Superintendent's recommending that you accept the recommendation to authorize the purchase of these total of 125 buses from the two vendors for the cost you see listed there, $11.1 million, as budgeted in SPOLOST. This will be our last and final SPOLOST IV bus purchase, and authorizing the purchase of these buses allows us to replace the older buses and thus reduce our operational costs and provide even more safe transport for Cobb County students with newer and more reliable buses. It'll also allow us to reduce our average age of our fleet as well, and I'm available for any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Adams, could you explain to us or give us some ideas about how we're going to dispose of these obsolete buses and how much money we might be able to recoup from either scrap metal or parts or what have you?
Sure. Howard Tickle Co. and The Warehouse does a great job of trying to maximize stakeholder resources by capturing every dollar we can on the back end. We'll take the non-reparable buses and the high-mileage buses that we're going to replace as we get these new buses in. The ones that we can actually sell whole, we will try to sell through a couple of websites that surplus government items, not unlike eBay, potentially even eBay, those kind of things, through The Warehouse. Those that can't be sold as a whole bus will then be scrapped for parts, if we can use the parts, and then sold for scrap. As far as how much money we make, it's not a lot. Typically, we were able to recapture a couple thousand dollars, $2,000 approximately on average through one of those techniques, but every dollar counts.
Thank you. Mr. Scamhorn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we make this a discussion item since it's a SPOLOST item.
All right. Item Number Three.
Next, Agenda Item Recommendation for Approval of Georgia Department of Education Capital Atlay Project Closeout for Various Schools. I know you're all aware of the process to close out capital atlay funds, but in order for us to receive final payment for the schools noted below, the board does have to provide a certificate of resolution to the DOE, certifies that the projects are complete, labor and material services are done, costs paid in full, and no outstanding claims. We're recommending that you adopt a certificate of resolution, have the superintendent and the board chair execute it, and we'll submit it to the state DOE so we can get those final payments. You see the various amounts that we're going to receive back from the DOE for the various projects. The smaller payments are for freezer-cooler projects, and some of the bigger ones are for roofing or HVAC on the second page. The total amount is approximately $378,000 that we expect to receive back, and allowing us to do this will reimburse the district for the costs we've already incurred on this project and allow us to close the file on these projects with the DOE. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Can we move this to consent?
I would move.
Oh.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I move to consent.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Scamhorn. Item Number Four.
Number Four, Recommendation to Approve Various Rights-of-Way and Easements for the Following Schools, Pope High School, Lovinggood Middle, Still Elementary, and Addison Elementary. The very short version for these is, as you know, we're consolidating these into one agenda item for the sake of brevity. Cobb County Water is asking for temporary construction easement and water easement at Pope High School to further assist in the construction of the roundabout that was discussed previously. Similarly, Georgia Power is requesting two easements to relocate overhead and underground electrical service at Pope as well. DOT is requesting two easements along Castile Road for rights of way and temporary construction, one relating to Lovinggood, one relating to Still Elementary School. Both of those are for the purpose of constructing catch basins to improve drainage on the property, as well as for construction of new sidewalks to tie into existing sidewalks along the roadway at those locations. And then finally, Georgia Power is requesting an easement in order to provide electricity to the sign at Addison Elementary School so they can install an LED panel. But approving these rights of way is recommended at no cost to the district, and these projects will enhance safety in the area by improving traffic, as well as the additions of new sidewalks, crosswalks, and curbing. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Adams, are you saying that these are going to improve traffic flow at Lovinggood and Still?
We think they'll improve safety by having more sidewalks. They'll improve drainage at Lovinggood and Still. Apparently, the drainage is less than satisfactory along the roadway. That might improve traffic flow, potentially, on a rainy day as well, but it's primarily to improve the safety by improving drainage, which could have an effect on traffic flow. And then there will be, along with some new sidewalks, some additional crosswalks and curbing as well. But they're primarily for drainage, but that would have an effect on traffic on a very rainy day.
Thank you.
Mr. Scamhorn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Mr. Adams answered a question in my mind very specifically there toward the end, where it would not be a cost to the district, so I would move that this would be consent.
Thank you. Mr. Doyle, can I get a point of clarification, pardon me, procedure? When we're, do we need motions on these items, or don't we just look for consensus?
You do not need a motion if the item is proposed without objection. So, as chair, you can say, is there any objection to putting this on consent? And if there is none, it can go straight to consent.
Okay. And otherwise, we put it on for discussion, right?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right, that brings us to the next item. Mr. Adams?
Yes, ma'am. Number Five, Recommendation for Approval Toward a Contract for Freezer and Cooler Replacements at the three schools you see listed there, Harrison, Nicholson, and Rocky Mount. They are scheduled to receive freezer and cooler replacements in accordance with SPOLOST IV. We received two proposals for these projects. We're recommending you award the contract to Sherrock Contracting out of Mableton, Georgia, and authorize the superintendent to execute the contract. For the cost there, you see just over $585,000. As budgeted in SPOLOST IV, an award in the contract will allow the project to remain on schedule with a substantial scheduled completion date of July 22 of 2016. And I'm available for any questions.
Questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I would like to make this discussion item since it's a SPOLOST item.
Right.
Thank you.
It's going to automatically, yes. It would automatically be discussion, yes. Thank you. Okay. Next item, Mr. Adams?
Yes, ma'am. Number Six, Recommendation for Approval Toward a Contract for Roof Replacement at Frye Elementary School. Also, in accordance with SPOLOST IV, Frye is indeed scheduled to receive a roof replacement as according to the attached facility summary. We received four proposals for this, and we're recommending you award the contract to Techta America Southeast out of Cumming, Georgia, and authorize the superintendent to execute the contract. The cost you see at $1.572 million as budgeted in SPOLOST IV. An award in the contract at its time will allow the project to remain on schedule with a scheduled substantial completion date, again, of July 22, 2016.
Thank you. Any objection to moving that to discussion? Okay. Mr. Adams?
Next item, number seven, Recommendation for Approval Toward a Contract for HVAC Replacement at Hayes Elementary School. Also, in accordance with SPOLOST IV, Hayes is scheduled to receive HVAC replacement as per the attached facility summary. We received two proposals on this. We're recommending that you award the contract to Bond Building Services out of Conyers, Georgia, and authorize the superintendent to execute the contract. The cost to be $3.195 million as you see listed there as budgeted in SPOLOST IV. An award in the contract will allow us to meet our scheduled substantial completion date of July 22, 2016.
Okay. Another discussion item, everyone? Okay.
And then last but not least, and you'll notice that those projects, we're going to have a lot of projects going on this summer, so we're going to bring you a lot of items in the future.
Thank you.
Get some work done. Finally, item number eight, Recommendation for Approval of Architect Appointment for Osburn High School's Replacement. As you're aware, the district rule FEAB, and FEAB I, set a standard fee for architectural engineering services. We're recommending that you appoint an architect at this point to begin planning for the Osburn High School Replacement School as outlined in SPOLOST IV. We're recommending that you approve the appointment of CGLS architects out of Atlanta as the architect for Osburn High School Replacement and allow us to execute that contract. The cost is fixed as per the board rule at 5% of the construction budget. You see the number there at $1.415 million as budgeted in SPOLOST IV, and approval of this will allow us to begin architectural planning as soon as possible. And I'm available for any questions.
Question? Mr. Wheeler?
Mr. Adams, have we used them before?
I don't recall this name. Now, we have, we are very familiar with their work. They're working on a project very similar to Osburn High School currently. They have designed schools in the past for us, but not in, that I can recall in the recent past, but they've done work before us in the past, and we're confident they can handle this project and meet the design schedule. They're good at monitoring construction in the prior years when we've used them before, which I guess has been before my time here. They've apparently been very good at handling questions and problems in a timely manner. As you're aware, this is just the first step in the Osburn High School redesign. We'll appoint an architect, and then that architect will work closely with the principal and to do initial planning, and then we'll bring it back to you in more detail at a future date.
Mr. Scamhorn, you had a question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Adams, this is a general question I think we discussed in different ways in the past, but occasionally, it'll come to my attention that a school have had a roof replacement. And what brought it to mind was the item number six. So, we talk, where a principal will have a leaky roof, and the roof was replaced three years ago, and do we have any recourse to go back, you know, and you may not know on the top of your head, and I'm not necessarily trying to pin us down on a guarantee on the roof, but whether it's a freezer replacement or a roof or whatever, do we have recourse or we can go back and?
We may, depending on the warranty. A couple answers to that question. One is if the warranty is still in effect, and obviously, we'll pursue that vigorously and try to make them make any repairs pursuant to the warranty. And then our long-term recourse is if we identify contractors who we think have not done the job that they should have done, whether it's on or off warranty, we don't have to use them again. So, short-term, we pursue it as a warranty issue vigorously. Long-term, we keep track of who's doing the good work for us.
Okay. And then, unrelated to that, and I'll get with you after the meeting on my thought on that, if I may, but unrelated to that, and Mr. Wheeler brought it up too, I don't know if you would like to, or you'd care to comment on new contractors helping us do our work, because with all the work that's coming, you know, the economy coming back and all that, as long as we do our due diligence, we're probably getting a better price by looking at new contractors. Is that correct?
Yes. We're open to using anyone if we think it could maximize stakeholder resources, but also still give us a good long-term product. Part of what you look at, particularly in an RFP for the non-cost factors, is how has their work been with us in the past, and essentially, are they going to be reliable going forward? But we're open to using new contractors. But we're open to using new contractors as long as we're relatively certain that it'll still give us a good product.
And finally, I wanted to, it's been a couple of years, I assume the criteria is still being used, if not improved, but to reassure our public, our taxpayers, our customers, we have a thorough vetting matrix, whether they're returning or a new contractor. Is that still correct?
That is correct. Our SPOLOST department really does an excellent job of vetting potential contractors and keeping track of what kind of work specifically they've done, whether it's a roof or, so they do a really an excellent job of keeping track historically of who's done what kind of a job for us in the past.
Let me just throw out, just real quick, we're using contractor, and I just want to make sure that we're properly discussing what we're talking about here, because this is the architect. We don't appoint contractors. We go through a bid or RFP process to identify, through a competitive process, contractors. The architects, we do have a matrix like you were talking about to where those are appointed and then work through the process from there.
That's a great point, sir.
Very good point. Let me clarify, can I use companies or whatever?
Well, when we're appointing, it's architects. That's generally the only thing that we appoint is architects.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. But we, and thank you, Mr. Exdale, I just want to make sure everybody knows that this is very structured. You all do a great job. You go at it methodically, so thank you.
Yeah, to be clear, this is just the architect for Osburn. We're not far enough down the road yet to look at specifically, potentially, who the next, the next phase would be.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. So, talking only about Osburn, we'll put that on the discussion agenda, and that brings us to number nine. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. Members of the board, I'm going to ask Mr. Darryl York to come forward and bring Agenda item number nine.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, Agenda item number nine is a recommendation for the adoption of revisions of policy IFBGE in Section 1, the instructional program of the policy manual of the Cobb Board of Education. This is a result of ongoing reviews of all of our administrative rules and board policies. This is going to align with an administrative rule I'll bring to you later today, and just moving, shifting some language around and making sure the two documents are in line with each other.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Banks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of questions. We're taking a lot of the languages that's in the actual policy and moving into the administrative rule. My question is, does the movement of the language into the administrative rule have the same authority as the policy would have?
Yes, sir. In discussions with legal counsel in the past, because we also bring our administrators to you, our administrative rules to you for review and your approval, that they do carry the same standard.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Banks. Mr. Exdale.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. If it'd be okay, I'll just ask Mr. York to go ahead and go through the administrative rules, which I believe is number 10.
That'd be fine. May I clarify, would the agenda item be consent or discussion?
Consent on number nine. We've already had that to review. Can we put that on consent? Is everybody okay with that?
You said number nine, you mean number 10?
I'm sorry. Agenda item number nine.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, consent. Okay. Thank you.
And then you've also been given administrative rule IFBGR, which is our technology acceptable use rule, for your 10-day review, and just here to see if you have any questions.
Seeing none.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. York. All right. May I have a motion to approve the agenda? Mr. Morgan approves second. Second to approve, Mr. Chastain. Okay, with that, our agenda will be set for the next meeting. And I guess... Okay, vote, sorry. We need a vote on the agenda for our next meeting. If you would please raise your hand if you're in agreement that we have set the agenda for the next meeting. Okay? All right. Agenda item passes. Mr. Scamhorn, you had a question?
I'm fine.
Okay. 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 Any other comments? If not, we will move to executive session. Mr. Doyle, our discussion topics?
Yes.
Personnel, land, no legal. Okay. Returning, let's see, y'all help me set that. We've got several personnel, so... 1215? No, no, I'm sorry. Well? 1215?
I'd say 1230.
1230 to be safe? Okay, 1230. All right, we're convened until... Okay, is there a motion? Mr. Scamhorn.
Madam Chair, I move that we convene to executive session for land and personnel.
Thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Wheeler, seconds. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. We are adjourned to executive session. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to reconvene from executive session? Mr. Sweeney, second. Mr. Chastain. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Motion approved. Okay. It brings us to items from executive session.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, I'm going to ask Mr. John Adams. I believe we have a total of three items to be voted on from executive session.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We do have the normal human resources personnel report followed by two land items. I'm pleased to present the human resources personnel report for today, March 9, 2016. The administration recommends the approval of the identified employment actions of those individuals listed on the personnel action report as discussed in executive session. We do not have any principal level and higher position recommendation. So this concludes the executive session. H.R. Personnel Report.
Okay. Thank you. Motion to approve the personnel report. Mr. Sweeney. Mr. Banks, second. All those in favor. Okay, unanimous?
Thank you. We do have two land items, and I believe Mr. Chastain has the first one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Adams. I hereby move that the board approve the following real estate contract: purchase of real property and improvements on approximately 2.406 acres at 560 Glover Street, Marietta, Georgia. Tax parcel number 17035900050 for $1,225,000.
Okay, is there a second? Mr. Scamhorn, seconded. All those in favor. Okay, unanimous. All right. Second item, I would like to propose that we hereby move that the board approve entering into an agreement for the purchase of sale of real property for the following: sale of real property and improvements on approximately 5.75 acres at 4400 West Atlanta Road, Smyrna. Portion of tax parcel number is 17074800340 to Pulte Homes Corporation for $4,332,000. Is there a second? Mr. Morgan, seconds. All those in favor. Okay, unanimous. Thank you. Right. I believe that concludes our business. Does anyone have any other business? Okay. Is there a motion? Closing remarks. Okay. Sorry. Closing remarks. Let's start with Mr. Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to congratulate the Pebblebrook Boys High School basketball team for their valiant effort in the state basketball tournament. I know there is some controversy surrounding that, but nevertheless, it does not diminish that it's the second year in a row that they've made it to state. This year, they weren't expected to make it that far because they have a young team, but I do suspect that they will be right back in the thick of things come this time next year. So to the coach, Coach Washington, to all the young men who are doing a great job over there, I wanted to send kudos to them. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Wheeler.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've got a book here to read today, not normal. First, I'd like to thank Varner Elementary, Cheatham Hill Elementary, Milford, and Dowell Elementary Schools for the honor of being guest reader at the Read Across America last week. One of the young, thought I was, might have been one of the authors of the book, but it was a true privilege. Those kids out there.
They thought you were a six?
Yeah, well. The Walk It in the Pocket or some, the book. I read that. Many books, but it was a lot of fun, and we got great kids at all those schools.
I love it.
Second, I'd like to congratulate a special group from Hillgrove this past week. The Navy Junior ROTC competed in the National Orientating Competition in Seattle, Washington, and they came in in third place in the nation with several cadets taking individual awards. And I'd like to also wish them good luck in the Navy Junior ROTC Drill Team as they compete this coming weekend in the Area 12 Regionals in Coffey County in South Georgia. And including, seconding Mr. Morgan with the boys and girls basketball teams, all those teams that played in the state tournament this weekend, I'd like to congratulate them all. But commend the Cobb teams for their performance and conduct. They were outstanding. In particular, coaches Hood, Arthur, and Washington and their staffs. I had the privilege and honor to watch those games, and they conducted themselves well. They coached their kids, and they did a great job. And it's unfortunate, I would say shame on the Georgia High School Association for not providing a championship setting. The backboards weren't lined up, but not only that, but there was a lack of security on that grounds. There was a guy that actually walked onto the basketball court during the game and had a cellphone conversation. And this is a championship game, and it's kind of inexcusable when problems come up and they're brought to their attention, and the officials refuse to correct them. To these players and coaches, this is a once-in-a-lifetime event, that they worked for years to be there. And to say that there was no appreciable effect on the management of that facility in those games, I disagree. One of their officials said that they didn't notice any difference in shooting. As an old basketball coach, the Tucker-McKeachern game, I made a comment to one of the colleagues that that's a 6A championship team. I was talking about Tucker. They aren't even hitting in the rims. And then McKeachern, the same thing. If they could have made a few shots early, but both of those coaches at Tucker and McKeachern got their kids playing and carried on the game. I mean, it was under the same conditions, but the attitude and their performance, it was acceptable. I don't agree with the Georgia High School Association. It's sad. And my fear is that things won't get better with them unless they change their attitude or take a different look at these events. Those are very important events for our kids and kids across the state. And I'm off my soapbox, but thank you, like I say, to our kids and coaches. You did an outstanding job down there, and congratulations, McKeachern, for winning the state championship. And our two other schools, teams, you're champions to us as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler. Mr. Scamhorn.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make a couple of comments and then save the rest of them for Thursday evening, but since my colleague mentioned GHSA, I'll just say this. I understand we're still looking into it, and we're trying to find some kind of conclusion or something. But I would say congratulations to Alatuna. They are absolutely champions in my mind and hopefully in the hearts and minds of all in Cobb County when they went down there to represent us as Cobb County. And I may have further, more to say on it. And then I would also like to point out, and I have a little more to say on this, but to the young man at Frye Elementary School, Drew Brandon, get well, my friend, and our hearts and prayers go out to you. Just a few months ago, it was discovered that he had a large mass between his chest wall and his heart, and it turned out to be cancer, but with prayers and support. He's got to go through two years of chemotherapy, but the cancer seems to be gone. So good luck to him. And again, may have a little more on that Thursday night meeting. And finally, thank our men and women in blue. I believe the day after our last meeting, a police lady or police person, whatever you want, I don't mean to be politically incorrect, but regardless, a policeman was shot and killed, and it seems like a weekly event, and it needs to stop, and I wish I had the power to do so. But thank them, buy them lunch if you see them in a place where you go to have lunch. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Keep it short. Just wanted to say thank you to the administration for coordinating the Read Across Cobb activities. I thought that was fantastic. I had a lot of fun at Silk Creek Elementary School, reading Horton, Here's a Who. And then, and that's a bit of a tongue twister if you've ever read that book. But above and beyond that, also, I want to just shout out to Wheeler High School. Mr. Chastain's alma mater that will be celebrating its 50th anniversary on Saturday, March 19, and I think it's pretty much an open community event. And I think it's pretty much an open community event, so if you have an opportunity and care to share in that celebration, please stop by Wheeler High School in the afternoon. I think it's from 2:00 until 4:00, 2:00 until 4:00 o'clock on March 19th, and thank you very much.
Mr. Banks?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the privilege of reading Green Eggs and Ham to the first grade at Powers Ferry Mrs. Dale's class. And Patrice Jones is the principal there. It was a great class. They listened, but I always say, you know, at that age, they're manageable, but it changes. Also, I want to say, and I coordinated with Mr. Chastain about Spraberry High School. They were recognized as one of the Cobb schools by the state school superintendent, Richard Woods, as an AP improvement and STEM improvement school. So, congratulations to them. And I always say, Spraberry is a great school. The academic program is second to none. So, congratulations to Spraberry High School and the staff. I do have a trivia question today. There is a current principal who attended Powder Springs Elementary School, Tapp Middle School, and graduated from McKeachern High School. Who is that principal and what school are they a principal at? You can read the answer in the gray five.
I assume that concludes your remarks, Mr. Schrebank.
I believe that's Jeannie Walker. Wrong.
Mr. Chastain?
She's still my favorite.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Read Across America came and went last week. I want to thank the third graders at Bells Ferry Elementary for participating, and also went over to Blackwell Elementary and read to some kindergarteners there. And I want to publicly thank Mrs. Chastain for taking the initiative last year to make sure that I have the appropriate accoutrements to read Dr. Seuss books. If you've seen a picture of me in my Cat in the Hat hat and my big red bow tie, we must thank Mrs. Chastain for that. And I would also like to tell everybody that what we used to call music festivals when we were in the chorus or in the band years ago are now large group performance evaluations. And we have students from all over the county going to the Lassiter Concert Hall and a couple of our churches and the choruses and the bands and the orchestras are performing for judges from around the state and around the country and getting their evaluations. So, I just want to wish all our students well and let all the people who teach and lead in our performing arts, I want to say a big thank you for all they do.
Great. Let me go, and then I'll let you go last. I wanted to echo Mr. Wheeler on thanking our teams for the hard work that they did in the state playoffs. That was phenomenal that we had that representation. And I think from the comments here, I believe board members got a lot more out of reading to kids than kids probably did from our reading to them. But I enjoyed being at Griffin Middle School and at Smyrna Elementary, so that was a big treat. But also wanted to thank the Metro Kiwanis Club for their star student banquet. It was excellent where we represented not just Cobb County schools, but all 27 schools in the county with high schools for their star students and star teachers. It was a very nice event, and we thank them for their support of our schools. Mr. Ragsdale?
Yes, ma'am. Again, congratulations to all three high school teams, especially showing through adversity, the competition. You represented the district well, and especially to the high school girls' team at McKeachern for bringing home the state championship. And I too, as Mr. Banks, I don't know what I'm supposed to take from that, but I got to read Green Eggs and Ham as well. So, at Hayes Elementary, and that's always a great event each year when we get to read. In this case, I read to kindergarteners, and it was just a tremendous event. And like I made the comments before, we've got a tremendous focus on reading and on grade level reading. And anytime kids can see adults and have adults reading to them, it's just a tremendous opportunity and makes a tremendous statement to the kids. So, thank you to all of the schools that allowed us to come in and read, and that concludes my comments.
Thank you so much. With that, any other comments? Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you.